Director of Finance.
Andy Povar, in for JT Klaus, City Attorney.
Dana Instrom, City Clerk.
Les Mangas, Director of Community Development.
Jolene Graham, Assistant City Administrator.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, if you would, now you're, but I'll try this again. If you would bow your heads and let's pray. Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this time that we've come together to do the work for the citizens. I pray that not only on in our city, but in the in the nation, we we've come and find a way to work together and care about each other with all the things that's going on, not let it trickle down into our communities. And I just am very thankful for everyone that's served on the city council past, present, and in the future. Thank you for all you do for us, and thank you for keeping the umbrella of Andover and protecting our citizens. In Jesus' precious name, I pray.
Amen.
Now, if you would, join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I will open the floor for a public forum. If you would like to speak to the council, state your name and your address and keep it short.
My name is Joyce Henry. I live at 2426 North Fieldstone in Andover. Good evening. My name is Joyce Henry, and I'm a performing artist with a focus on theater and dance. I hail from New York, but for the past 20 years, I've been an educator and a performer in Wichita, in the Wichita community, sharing my passion for the performing arts with the next generation. I'm an Andover resident, and before I begin, I would like to commend the governing body for all of your hard work to make Andover the best place to live. In addition to being an Andover resident, I'm also a parent. I'm a parent whose kids have participated in various of the Andover recreational services programs that Andover offers. We have been on basketball, baseball, and flag football teams with Andover Rec, and we've loved the programs that have been offered. The reason I'm here today is to hopefully start a conversation. I'd like to start a conversation to request an addition to the Andover recreational services program. I would like to see a performing arts component to the added to the current offerings that the Andover recreational services program provides. Currently, you have youth programs for volleyball, basketball, baseball, flag football, baton, twirling, and pickleball. Square dance is offered as well, but for adults only. As you have probably noticed, there are no performing arts programs on this list for our Andover youth. Not every child grows up excelling in sports, and I feel that it is Andover's in Andover's best interests to broaden the horizons of our recreational services program. The Andover recreational services program should strive to reach all of the residents in our young generation, to encourage them to participate in local activities, to challenge them to be the best that they can be, focusing on what their passions are. And to do all of that in our own city would be the best for our community's economy and for our community's growth. To support this conversation, I did some research and would like to share some facts on how theater and dance and the performing arts are beneficial to brain development and how it can boost children's health. Number one, when a child performs on stage, they learn to master anxiety when facing stressful situations. Number two, when a child performs on stage, they learn teamwork and cooperation while building strong friendships. Number three, when a child performs on stage, they learn perseverance by working hard to perfect their part. Number four, when a child performs on stage, they work to memorize lines, movement, and lyrics. This is one example of how performing arts can help improve their academic performance. When a child performs on stage, they work on trust and listening skills by being able to take direction. When a child performs on stage, they become quick thinkers who are able to deal with unforeseen circumstances calmly and productively. When a child performs on stage, they have an increase in confidence and their self-esteem can soar. This can lead to better public speakers as adults and overall improvements to their mental health as they grow. These statistics come from articles in CreativeChild.com, Scholastic, and Health360. Please look in your email inboxes for the full articles if you're interested in more detailed information. Along with those articles, I have included my contact information for a follow-up conversation with the powers that be in the Andover recreational services program. Currently, in our area, Derby Rec offers dance classes. Maze Rec offers musical theater and dance opportunities. It's my opinion that Andover should be the one leading this charge in our surrounding area. Andover has the amenities to easily support this performing arts venture. You might be asking yourself, what will this performing arts component look like? I would recommend themed short summer camps and dance to expose the youth to various dance disciplines to start. For musical theater, I'd recommend auditioning for larger roles and enrollment in chorus parts with registration being similar to the sports program. The classes and rehearsals would take place maybe in the Andover Community Center, and performances could be at right here at the Cat Fed Amphitheater with a small ticketed fee for audience members. This could become a new Andover tradition for the youth to look forward to. Think about the arts exposure the city could take responsibility for. Thank you so much for your time. I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just, for the city, have we done anything like that in the past as far as youth performing arts?
We offered dance classes, and I believe our perks and rec manager is here, so he could speak to. I think we had like some decline after COVID, but certainly we've got a application or a proposal online, I believe. Again, Daniel knows more about this than I do, but we're open to adding new classes all the time and have proposals for instructors to fill out. We'd be happy to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Counsel Daniel Shapal, Parks and Rec Manager, we have had in the past a variety of dance programs. They have been small, and as Jenny alluded to, they have had up and down in participation, particularly post-COVID. Post-COVID, we're we're just with twirling, and square dance actually moved to the senior center location recently as well. So baton and twirling, those series of programs are the only ones right now in the categories that are being discussed. But we certainly, we certainly have resources to look at that further. This year, we worked with Jolene on getting an instructor contract agreement finalized. As you probably know, we have a very small staff, particularly on the programming side compared to the two agencies that were mentioned. So we do rely on an outside entity or entities to to help with those. When we've done yoga and Zoom in the past, it wasn't internal staff teaching those or being the qualified instructors for that for those efforts. But definitely have a little bit of times that are open at the community center. Monday nights, Wednesday, Tuesday nights, and Wednesday nights are currently utilized. Thursdays are open. Fridays and Saturdays typically get utilized with private rentals, but not all the time. Definitely some opportunities there, though, if we want to look at those some more.
Thank you. I just thank you, Joyce, for bringing that to our attention. I mean, I think it would be great for the community, obviously. So something we'll talk about and get some more information on. And you said you sent us an email, or you were going to?
I sent it to Dana today.
Okay.
To hopefully get to you guys.
Okay.
So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Joyce.
All right, acceptance of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Seven one proclamation, Andover High School tennis team, girls tennis team. And Councilman, Councilmember Hamilton will read the proclamation.
Whereas the Kansas 5A Girls State Tennis Tournament was held on Saturday, October 18th in Kansas at the Costover Tennis Center in Topeka. And whereas the Andover High Girls Tennis Team prevailed over its opponents, thus winning their fifth straight 5A championship. And whereas the Andover High Girls Tennis Team was led by Coach Steve Alexander, Mark Cross, and Abby Stevens. And whereas team members consist of Mia Jeremelo, Audrina Joza, Emma Jitawate, Ada Tantimsenboon, Shelby Benjamin, and Riley Nance. And whereas senior singles champion Mia Jeremelo triumphed in the final with a 6-4, 6-3 victory. And whereas senior doubles champion Emma Jitawate and junior doubles champion Ada Tantimsenboon capped an undefeated 31-0 season by prevailing 6-2, 6-4. Now, therefore, I Phil Hamilton with the city council assembled in regular session on the 12th day of November 2025 hereby proclaim November 13th, 2025 as Andover High School Girls Tennis Team Day.
Congratulations, ladies.
Congratulations. Well done.
Let's keep it up. Keep the streak alive, Coach. All right. Nice, I think.
Congrats. Very good.
Congrats, ladies. Thanks.
All right. Eight one, Family Life Center Safe House Presentation, and Family Life Center Executive Director Angela McClure is going to talk to us.
Good evening. I, my name is Angela McClure, and thank you for the introduction. I guess you just said that. I am the new director at the Family Life Center Safe House in El Dorado. I have been with the agency for about nine years, but this agency has been quietly operating in El Dorado for about 35 years, or almost 35 years. I am just here tonight to tell you a little bit about the agency and find out if you have any questions. We had submitted an application for funding through the special alcohol tax, so just to make anyone here in the room who's not familiar with what we do and and all that we do, I just would like to tell you a little bit about us. So, like I said, our agency's been in operation for about 35 years. We started out as an emergency shelter with with three staff members for survivors of domestic violence. And have in the last 10 years done significant expansion on what we do besides emergency shelter. So we are doing considerable outreach services that include public education or or community educations. We have a community education series that we provide to so social groups, clubs, church groups, things such as that. We do a lot of presentations at area schools, starting at pre-K level and teaching them safe adults, trusted triangles, talking. It's it's different than the stranger danger that you used to hear about. It's it's a little more intensive. It talks about bullying and what what your body autonomy is and 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 that kind of thing, but it's all age appropriate. So we start at the pre-K level, and we go through campus level at your at our local colleges to teach about prevention and red flags and teach about everything from from bullying, social media, safety, that kind of stuff. So that's a big piece of what we're doing in addition to the shelter. We also do have a police response advocate that will come to a scene if there's a domestic violence incident, and they that person that advocate can come to the scene to sit with the survivor or the victim and and kind of just talk over what their options are and give them a voice. Our law enforcement, our local law enforcement are amazing. However, some of them are not trauma-informed. Some of them are not trained for how to handle a domestic violence situation from the victim's standpoint. They're doing their job as the police officer, and and so someone there to support the the survivor is is important, too. So we have someone who is on call to do that 24/7. That is another another one of our services. We provide court advocacy to individuals who are seeking a protection order, an order of protection, be that a stalking order or a protection from abuse order. We we do hundreds of those a year with persons in our local area. And we are we are assisting in completing those, making sure that that the applications that are being submitted are meeting the criteria for that particular statute, and also supporting those persons through the the court processes so that they know this is what you can expect today to happen today in court and the next time in court. And 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 just kind of walking them through that. We also provide court advocacy to set through criminal cases that are about domestic violence or sexual violence. In addition to that, our agency has recently opened a small transitional housing unit. We also are, we wrote for for funding dollars to provide housing assistance to survivors. We operate a rapid rehousing program that allows us to help survivors with their deposits and first three months rent. We can help with utility assistance. We can do some help with transportation assistance. So we have some financial dollars that are that are coming through HUD, that come through the HUD department, and they're around stabilizing people after they're during their escape from where they are. Hold on, I think I mentioned everything. Let me just refer to my note here. I'm sorry. The one thing that I didn't mention that's on my list here is that we also provide assistance to officers or individuals who are are have been sexually assaulted. So we can take transport, we can transport that person for a SANSAR exam from wherever they are from to to Wichita or wherever the the closest place is that they that they can receive that exam. And our sexual assault advocate will sit with that individual through the whole process and keep them company and counter just walking them through what's what's to be expected. Any questions for me?
So this has no boundaries. There's, as far as social status and things like that, it's all walks of life that that endure this nonsense. Is that a fair statement?
That's absolutely a fair statement. There it is. I mean, there are some marginalized areas of our communities that that do suffer at higher rates. Also, you know, we find that that I'm trying to be delicate here. I'm so sorry. We we find that that there there are areas of of the of the population where it's more prominent, but it does affect everyone. I there isn't, there is, in nine years, there isn't one category of people I have seen that have not been affected. Not one group, not one individual that can say, man, I never saw that before either. So that's true statement.
Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else here, sir?
I just, first of all, thank you so much for everything that you do. It's such an amazing service and helps so many. What what is your like area of influence or region? Is it, I mean, I take it it's wider than Butler County, reference Wichita?
I'm so sorry. That is absolutely true. So I didn't mention that we are a an accredited agency with KCSDV. That's the statewide coalition. Our statewide coalition does assign us certain counties as our kind of targeted area, but we we do help people from across the state. But our targeted area, where I mean, where we started was Butler County, and in the last four years, we've added Greenwood, Elk, and Chautauqua counties.
And then for those that are watching online, what like schools, if they wanted you guys to come out, do they just reach out to you guys and ask, or do you guys go around to the schools, or how does that work?
We we are actively soliciting and and trying to get to get schools to to let us come and present at any level. I mean, we we have a program. But if if that program doesn't fit with what they're what they're looking for, doesn't suit their needs, any student that we can talk to about safety, we're willing to come and do that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ma'am, I can tell the passion in your voice for what you do.
I shake a little when I talk about it.
I can see. I hear that. So I commend you for what you do. It's not a, it's not an easy task. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Have a good evening. You, too.
Darn it. Need a minute. All right. Consent agenda, nine one through nine three.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve consent agenda items nine point one through nine point three as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Ten one, 2026 renewal for workers' compensation, property, and general liability. And Jenny's going to talk to us about this.
My agenda items tonight, Mr. Mayor and Council, I I get to introduce other people to speak about them, so I have an easy night tonight. And I also get some kind of good news items. So thank you, staff and consultants, for loading me up well tonight. First one that I'm introducing is Lance Spence with USI, our broker for property liability and work comp insurance. We've been spending a lot of time with Lance lately in email and meetings and phone calls. We heard feedback from the governing body during our budget workshop this summer about workers' compensation and a little bit of a change to the plan that Lance is going to talk to you about. And I think the mod is going to make people a little excited, too. So I'll pass it over to Lance, and thank you for your time and work for us.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Council. Again, Lance Spence with USI Insurance. Jenny kind of touched on the high points, but at a holistic level, we had a very favorable renewal this year. You know, last year, we faced a little bit of challenge due to some of the workers' compensation losses that we've experienced over the last few years. But that is starting to trend down, which helped us materially in controlling costs this year for the renewal. And and we've got some strategies that we want to talk to, I think that have already been presented to you in your packet, but about how to control that experience mod even more on a going-forward basis. Because at the end of the day, the workers' compensation is a large spend from a premium perspective. But it's also the most controllable line of insurance coverage that you have on the property and casualty lines of coverage. So you know, we are proposing to implement a deductible for your workers' compensation. In the state of Kansas, there there are a number of different benefits to having a deductible. We haven't historically had. But at the end of the day, everything that falls under the deductible level that we're proposing is not reported to the governing body for the experience modification factor, which is called NCCI. So that factor, that experience modification factor is applied to the bottom line of the premium calculation. And the more we control that, the the less and more cost cost benefit that there is to having that in place. We've done a lot of analysis on how that would impact the city going forward, obviously based on a historical snapshot. But you know, just in quick numbers, if we would have had the level of deductible we're proposing, we would have eliminated 20 claims over the last three years. And a pretty material financial impact, both from cost savings, but also the future costs of insurance premium due to the savings and the reduction in the experience mod. So that's really probably the biggest change that we're looking at from a from an insurance perspective this year. In whole, in in whole, the the insurance marketplace is relatively stable right now, except for property insurance, as you can all imagine. Obviously, we've had a, we've had a bit of a, some pressure on our losses at the city over the last few years, both from a property and a and a liability standpoint. But you know, we're kind of, we're getting to the point where we're putting that behind us now. And I think on a going-forward basis, too, that will allow us to look at some other alternative carriers potentially to make sure that we are in the right place from a cost perspective. We did market the account this year, and this is kind of outlined in your packet. There's only a handful of insurance companies still on a commercial basis that are entertaining public entities in the state of Kansas, property being the biggest challenge for all of these carriers. Travelers did bring an option to the table. At the bottom-line level, they were more competitive from a from a guaranteed cost premium standpoint. The issue with travelers is, and we see this with a lot of our insurance companies anymore, is they require a much higher level of deductible on the property. And the the level of deductible travelers is is a percentage of the value of the buildings that would be impacted. So the fact that EMC is still willing to offer us a flat deductible of $75,000, that's kind of unprecedented right now in the marketplace. So I think that's kind of been our collective agreement that it's probably in our best interest, even though the premium dollar's a little bit more in the event of a loss at the long, you know, in the long term, we're going to, it'll be more cost-effective. So that is why we are proposing to stay with EMC this year. There is, there are a couple of risk retention pools out there that you all may be familiar with. Midwest Public Risk is one. They expressed some interest in in underwriting the the city's insurance program this year. But once they got into the losses and due to the recency of the tornado and the large open liability claim at that time, they just, they couldn't, they couldn't, they couldn't do that from a from a reinsurance perspective. Their loss ratios just weren't within their their boundaries. So again, we're proposing to stay with EMC. Really, the main, the main programming change would be the deductible on the workers' compensation. Outside of that, it's, it was pretty favorable. We had early indications to expect higher increases from a rating standpoint, but at the end of the day, EMC came back to the table and was was pretty reasonable. So I will stand for any further questions or discussion around any of the items that we included in the the narrative.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So in in regards to the deductible, how how does that benefit? Because I see the difference in the spreadsheet is roughly $43,000 between travelers and EMC. So how how does that, do we get any of that money back from the deductible, you know, if we don't use it? I I saw something in here where we got like a credit if we didn't use so much money.
Well, so there is a credit on the on the front side of having the deductible. There's actually a premium credit by head for having a deductible versus not. It's not a big number on the front side. The real benefit is on the backside and controlling the experience mod, because long-term, basically, every dollar deductible you pay for is going to have about a $2.89 impact, future impact and reduction in premium due to experience mod. So it's it's more about controlling that on the backside and having a long-term strategy that's going to help control the cost. The one thing I would like to point out, because that the difference that you mentioned, EMC also, they are a mutual company, and I think it's outlined in your packet as well. They do pay the city dividends based on your good experience, even in some of the not-so-good years. So when you look at the dividends the city has received over the last three years even, it reduces that delta by quite a bit. So when you look at the dividend and the potential savings with the with the deductible versus the traveler's bottom-line number, it's 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 almost a wash.
Anyone else? All right, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the 2026 Workers' Compensation Property and Liability Insurance Policies with EMC, VFIS, and Coalition as outlined in the amount of $558,499.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Lance. Appreciate it, buddy.
You bet. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Eleven one, Annexation Petition, Green Meadow Edition, and Julie's going to talk to us about this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this and the next couple agenda items are referring to this property here at 1904 East Central, just across the street from City Hall, actually. You all may recall that last year, that little square in the corner, about an acre, was annexed and platted as the Green Meadows Properties Edition, and it features a single-family house. The property owner of the larger property there is wanting to now annex another portion of it and move that into the city, as well as rezoning it and plating it, as you will see here in a few minutes. and move that into the city, as well as rezoning it and plating it, as you will see here in a few minutes. I do want to point out that the annexation and the plat that you will see are not for the entirety of this approximately eighty acre parcel. It is about thirty eight acres that is being annexed right here to include the existing single family house and some of its associated outbuildings. This annexation, there's not really that much else to say. They're going to be rezoning it here in a couple of minutes, so we'll take care of that. And the existing buildings will stay. There is an existing raw water five water line to the south and existing city sewer line present to the west that are able to serve the property. Petition for annexation. This is not a unilateral annexation.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On the plus or minus thirty eight acre, why isn't there an exact number on that?
On the petition itself, they don't call it out. The plat, I can find the exact number on there if you would like, but part of it is that little section in the corner that was already annexed and what will become a reserve here in a couple of minutes when you all see the plat.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt an ordinance annexing the Green Meadow Edition generally located in nineteen oh four East Central Avenue, Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. I'm going to stop right here and then back up and do a little housekeeping. Couple of forms did not get closed, so I'm going to take a second to close the couple of forms. Right, eleven two. Notice to intent to select electrical provider for nineteen oh four East Central Avenue. Julie again will talk to us about this.
Yep. So for this annexation you all just approved, we are required to notify the electrical provider that a decision will be made on who will serve this property. In this case, Evergy is who will be serving this. They already served the existing plat that was separated off from this. So this is just kind of a perfunctory thing that we have to do whenever we do an annexation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt a resolution providing notice to Evergy Inc. and setting the date of consideration and selection of an electrical supplier for the property annexed that generally located in nineteen oh four East Central Avenue, Andover, Kansas, on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty six.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. Eleven three, final plat, Green Meadow Edition. Again, Julie will speak to us on this.
So as I alluded to, there we go, previously, in addition to the annexation, the property owner here is plating this portion of the property. It contains one, a single family dwelling and some accessory structures that go with it. There's an existing access drive that connects to Central. And the existing waterway over there has been designated as a reserve in order to control that. As I will point out yet again, this is not plating the entire property. Kind of the quote unquote back forty is being left as an exception to the plat. And as I pointed out in planning commission, I'll mention it here. You'll notice that this kind of leaves a strip of land to access that back approximately forty acres that will probably be developed at some point in the future. Generally, we don't like things to be laid out in this way, where there's just one little thin access point with the development in front and a development in the back. But that waterway means that there's really not a better way to do it without some pretty expensive bridge construction and probably moving the existing house. So the drive to get to the house that is there now also has to kind of snake around the waterway in order to be functional. So it's kind of an exception to that guideline.
You know what? I'd put a log cabin back there if it was me.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is more legal. I thought that flag lots were not permitted anymore, which that's what this is, would be, would be having when you have a small little accessible area and with a larger air in the back. Is that something that we're just allowing? Or, because I thought the state doesn't allow it anymore.
That remaining parcel is in the county. And the county doesn't consider that to be a flag lot because the frontage on Central Avenue meets their minimum
Width?
Lot width.
So that's why they did that in the front.
Yes, and as Julie explained, this is a really unusual piece of property. It's surrounded by floodplains on three sides. It makes it very difficult to subdivide.
So kind of to piggyback off what Mike says, if, say, in the future he wanted to develop that land back behind, there's not enough property off Central to do so, correct?
There is enough width there to accommodate a public street if they were to find access to some other adjoining tract so that it could have more than one point of access.
Okay. Got to have two egress and ingress then, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That is possible to connect over to the Vista Ridge Edition that's in construction as we speak.
Is that to, which direction is that?
To the west.
To the west, okay. Oh, when that is eventually developed.
Yeah, to the north. Eventually New York town.
Now, does that plat to the west, does it already have a preliminary layout?
It does.
To show where that connection is?
It has a public street platted to this property line.
Okay.
Anyone else? Good question, Mike. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the recommendation of the planning commission and approve the dedications of the land for public purposes in the Green Meadow Additional Final Plat.
Second. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out one thing. On the legal descriptions, and I think Homer had this question earlier about plus minuses, or most of the time they say more or less. It's just that you don't have to be able to say a certain number, forty, you know, acres exact, because you could have another surveyor go out and certify it, and it could be slightly different. You can have another one go out and be slightly different. So it's more of a legal issue to be able to say more or less. And you can't argue that it's point zero zero difference.
And then the floodplain, it could be less land next year than it is right now. Yeah, right. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On that note too, less is it, this I guess would come in more if it was a unilateral lateral, but you can't annex, a city can't annex something over forty acres, is that correct?
Greater than twenty one acres without the consent of the county commission.
Okay. In this, in this case, it doesn't matter because it's the owner came to us.
Correct. We were petitioned.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, the owner has to come to us first on that. If we went and tried to do that to the owner and say, you have to do this, or we want you to do it, they wouldn't have to. There are some exceptions to that.
All right, fourteen, fourteen, eleven four zoning amendment, Green Meadow Edition, Z dash A twenty five dash zero 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 one.
One more thing on this property. Whenever we annex something into the city, it retains its county zoning district. So we like to have them changed to a city zoning district. In this case, it of course has the Ag forty agricultural district. And the applicant intends to switch it to the SF one, single family residential low density district, which is already in place for the little portion in the corner that we already annexed. And it will be appropriate for this property, easily exceeds the minimum lot size requirement. And there is a existing single family house, only one. So that works just fine.
All right. Any questions? Can I get a motion?
Do we have to do your checklist?
I have thirteen, right? This one? Okay. Sorry, I thought I read this wrong. Thank you, Homer. All right, city vacate, vacations checklist.
It's not in the packet either.
I think it's.
Yeah, I got it. It should be on here. Oh, here it is, right?
Yep.
All right. No.
Yeah, page eighty.
We'll get to it eventually. There we go. There we go. Thank you, Homer. We'll try this again. City Council rezoning checklist case number Z dash A twenty five zero 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 one. This is an application for the change of zoning district classification on a property generally located at nineteen oh four East Central, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves for participating in the case because they have a conflict of interest.
No.
So I will now ask city, council, I was now, I will now ask the council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to this agenda item, which they would like to share.
No.
No.
Has a city clerk received any protest petition on the case?
No, sir.
I now ask city council members if they have all received copies of the draft minutes of the planning commission for May twenty twenty five, which summarizes the hearing on the case.
Yes.
Yes.
I now call on city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on the case.
Already did so, so ditto that.
All right. Are there any questions for the zoning administrator from council members? And we've done that. Have any written communication been received by the city clerk?
No, sir.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information? Yep, no? Would, we would like to welcome anyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name, address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes and the video of the hearing, public hearing has been made available. So please limit your comments to new information not previously shared at the public forum, public hearing held on October twenty first, twenty twenty five. Does anyone from the public have any new information? No one from the public is here. Does the applicant have any further response to public comments? There weren't any. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you have received an outline of choices provided under state statutes for council action, KSA twelve dash seven fifty seven C. Counsel, how do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move we approve case number Z dash A two five dash zero 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 one for a change of zoning district classification from Butler County AG dash four zero to city SF dash one, single family residential low density district at nineteen oh four East Central Avenue, Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. Persons agreed by the final decision of council on this matter have thirty days after today's action within which to appeal to the district court. All right. AV Apartment Reserve A quit claim deed, unless it's going to talk to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, during the engineering of what we call the Green Valley segment of Founder's Parkway, we realized that we needed some additional right of way and to actually straighten out some of the curves that were previously platted on Founder's Parkway. We negotiated with the property owner at that time to replat the property to accommodate our road project. And part of the negotiation was that the city would assume the responsibility for the two reserves, A and B, on the north side of Founder's Parkway. We accepted Reserve B over a year ago after it was, the improvements were done on it. The negotiation was that the property owner had to provide the required screening and buffering for his project on that reserve before the city assumed maintenance. That landscaping and irrigation has been completed. And we're now here with a quit claim deed from the developer to the city as we agreed on more than two years ago.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I move to accept the quit claim, quit claim deed for Reserve A from AV Apartments LLC.
Second.
It's hard to say, isn't it? Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries six zero. All right, city council vacation checklist, case number Z dash VA twenty five dash zero 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 two. This is an application for vacation of certain lands generally located at one twenty three West Cloud Avenue. I will now ask council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to this agenda item, which they would like to share.
No.
No.
Has a city clerk received any protest petitions from property owners who have not joined? And the petition for vacation would be a proper party to the case.
No, sir.
I now ask council members if they have all received copies of the draft minutes of the planning commission for October twenty first, twenty twenty five, which summarizes the hearing on the case.
Yes.
Yes.
I now call on city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on this case.
So in this case, the property owner at one twenty three West Cloud, the Andover Auto Body, is adding on to their business to building another warehouse structure on the western side of the property. And the original footprint of it has been expanded during the construction process. And as a result, one little corner of the building that they want to build would violate the thirty five foot front yard building setback on the property, basically due to the curvature of West Cloud in that area. And it is by a couple of feet. It's a little corner of the building that gets into it. So they applied for a variance to reduce that front yard building setback and allow them to build the building as intended. And they received it back in August of this year. But unfortunately, staff, me mostly, did not catch that this is also platted on the plat that this property is a part of, which means that the setback also needs to be vacated since it is part of a legal instrument like this. So this is basically cleaning up that step that we missed, so that they can use the variance that they were already granted.
Any questions?
Is the work already done?
I don't believe construction is complete. They wanted to get out ahead of actually committing to the building until they could get the variance to make sure that it would be okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are there any utilities that that would be needed down the road that would need that vacated area?
It's hard to say in the future. None of the utilities that I, utility companies that had reviewed this took any issue with something being placed there. So I don't, you know, if they don't anticipate being a problem, then I don't either. This is a pretty developed area, so it's hard to, it's hard to say exactly, but I wouldn't expect a huge change in what's in that setback.
And this is just a building setback. It is not an easement.
Correct.
The utilities are located out in the right of way in this particular area.
The sewer and the water crosses.
Water, gas.
This is physically not doing. This is physically not doing anything, right? It's just a formality of you can have your building closer to the setback.
Property line. Yes. And for vision triangle concerns, you know, with the curvature of Cloud, we did look into that. Should not be a problem with this little bitty corner violating the setback.
Okay. Anyone else?
Would that set precedent for the neighbor to the west to do that as well?
Well, they would also have to receive a variance. They could certainly try, although, you know, in this case, we grant variances for things that are kind of special circumstances. And as you can see, the shape of this property means that a rectangular building can't fit like it would on a rectangular property.
And there is no property owner to the west. It's a reserve.
Just had to throw the question out there because it could come up.
We, we did it for point nine, but, you know, that's on the north end of town. So we're doing a little bit different down there. But as far as from, I don't know, police station this way is we, we don't, we don't do the variances because we're trying to keep it cosmetically aligned, if you will, if I remember correctly.
Anyone else? Have any written communication been received by the city clerk?
No, sir.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information? No. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you've received an outline of the choices provided under state statutes for council action KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven C. Counsel, how do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a vacation order for a portion of the front yard building setback at one-two-three West Cloud Avenue.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero, six zero. Drainage easement Vista Ridge second first phase, second first phase, fourteen-one Drainage Easement Vista Ridge second first phase. And Julie will talk to us about that.
Yep. Last one I've got for you here. This is just a very simple and very small drainage easement over in the Vista Ridge second edition first phase. The applicant just found that they needed a little sliver of one of these lots to be dedicated as a drainage easement so that there could be a sewer pipe installed there.
Any questions? Should we wait on my homie to get back? Can I get a motion?
It's not on there. Four, one on here. Um, there's not really one written out, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the drainage easement Vista Ridge second first phase.
Second. Any further questions or discussion?
I apologize for that. We intended for that to be on the consent agenda, but we appreciate the due time and conversation you've had.
All right.
And the fact I made a motion as I go. Excellent job.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Ronnie was confused. Twenty twenty-five budget amendment. And, uh, is that Jenny? Matt? Oh, hi, Matt. Oh, it says right there, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
You didn't notice you didn't have on a special sock.
What? I have on special socks? On the bottom, they say my way or the skyway. They're power socks. Okay, to the budget amendment.
Definitely informing you.
Well, she asked. Um, so tonight requesting that you set the public hearing for the budget amendment for December ninth. Um, but along the way, I'm going to go ahead and just kind of explain why I'm recommending amending these seven funds. And if you want to know a humbling experience for a somewhat new finance director, it's bring a forty-seven point six million dollar budget amendment to your governing body. Um, so I'm going to start with the wastewater, water, and street improvement funds, because they kind of are all, they have a common theme, which is that, no, no news to you here, they all have pretty significant projects going on in each of those funds. And as we went through the budget process for twenty-five and twenty-six, I presented these in a very cash basis format where, oh, we're going to spend about this much in twenty-five and this much in twenty-six. We put estimates together and showed it flowing out over the life of those projects. But during our audit this year, I had some conversations with our auditor, um, because I was trying to get out, to be honest, I was trying to get out of booking encumbrances because I was like, this is a lot of work for us to track all of this. And I don't really see that it's benefiting us much. And she said, oh, well, coincidentally, um, you have to. And K-MAG has also broadened the definition of an encumbrance to include pretty much all financial obligations. So, um, the way that, the thing that that's going to change is that all of the expenditure for the projects, for the wastewater treatment plant, the projects listed for the street improvement fund and for the water fund are going to show in this year. All of them have the cash that they need. We did financing to cover the ones that we didn't have cash on hand for already. We've been over all of that, but there will, they will show. And then they'll kind of run through the background, whittling down a liability over the life of those projects. Does that make sense? Or are there any questions about that part? Okay. Uh, the TIF fund is just a procedural change. We originally didn't have that fund as a budgeted fund. We were just going to run those through the debt service fund. And then, uh, through the course of twenty twenty-four, after we had approved the twenty twenty-five budget, we realized that plan was going to be very complicated because we were going to be trying to track different revenues coming from a similar stream for a different piece of, of the debt service payments. So, um, we decided to budget a fund for those, and it makes it easier because it kind of keeps them separate. Um, and we can track the different types of receipts. And we talked a lot about the TIF district already this year and how it, it got funded. And we just need to have the budget authority in that fund to give our, to make the debt payment. The E nine-one-one fund, um, and the tourism amphitheater funds, all three are, are the only ones on the list where we really just had things that cost more than we thought they were going to cost when we approved this budget. So E nine-one-one, it's the CAD and RMS software. We didn't know at that time because we didn't have an agreement yet. So we were guessing and we, we were a little too optimistic with our guess on how much that was going to cost. And then the tourism fund is being amended by twenty-five, or is being recommended to be amended by twenty-five thousand dollars. Same with the amphitheater fund, um, both related to the next agenda item should you choose to approve. Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to set the public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-five amended budget for the December ninth, twenty twenty-five council meeting.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Sixteen-one Legends Globally formerly, formerly ASM Global Budget Amendment. And Jenny, we'll start with this.
This is that other item that I, I just get to introduce. Um, you all have been talking about ASM, formerly ASM, now Legends Global, um, and the agreement that you have with them to run the Capital Federal Amphitheater. And matter of fact, you spent a fair amount of time at your workshop just two weeks ago regarding this very topic, but for the public's interests and ability to view later. Um, AJ Beleski, the regional manager, will go through a presentation with you. Kat Ewing, uh, with the, the director of the Capital Federal Amphitheater is also here. And, um, the good news on this one is that it got better than when you heard it two weeks ago. So, um, everything you know, plus a little bit better. So I'll turn it over to AJ.
What's yours? How you doing tonight?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good, thank you.
We appreciate the time, uh, tonight, uh, and thanks for the introduction, Jenny. AJ Beleski with Legends Global. Uh, tonight, we'll just do a quick recap. I know we talked a couple of weeks ago of, of our season. We're in year two and have some positive news. I know a lot of folks have made it out to the shows over the past summer, and we're excited to, to talk a little bit about it tonight. Dana, are you driving? Oh, it's me. Thank you. All right. So, uh, we talked a little bit about this. Our name has changed since we, since about this time last year. Uh, we have announced, uh, earlier this year, we announced that our name has changed from ASM Global to Legends Global. Um, that was an acquisition that was announced a little over about a year and a half, two years ago. And, uh, we're excited to announce the new name, new logo for our company. So, uh, we had a great, we had a fun season. And this picture right here is from, uh, our last show. This was during Greater Andover Days. Uh, this was Three Dog Night and the Little River Band. Um, it's a great picture. It's a little dark up there on the screen, but, uh, probably something you'll see a lot on our social sites and our website. It is on the wall. That's fantastic. We love it. So, kind of sums up, uh, I believe, the season right there when you go back to that picture. Uh, we love having the carnival in the background, and you can just kind of see what it looks like at its, at its peak, uh, when the amphitheater is completely, uh, looks near capacity and, uh, a lot, lots of things going on there. So exciting night. I might need a little help with this. How do I play the video? So that, that video we use on our social media about halfway through the season this year to kind of educate the public. A lot of times when we announce a show where there's comments below on, on, especially on like the Facebook platform and on Meta, uh, it's where's this venue? And so we want to educate the public on where it is. Uh, as we continue to do more shows, we believe that will absolutely happen and it will grow. But this is kind of, this video was intended to show what the experience is like when you come, um, a show at Capital Federal Amphitheater. That is a picture of the seats. So since, uh, we gave this presentation last year, uh, Legends Global purchased four thousand eight hundred and fifty chairs. Uh, they are stored in the site boxes that the city of Andover agreed to purchase, um, that sit uh, just to the right of the, or to the east of the stage. And we use that kind of as our backstage compound. So we're very appreciative to the city. Thank you for purchasing those site boxes, and we're glad to have the chairs. We use them for every one of our shows, touring concerts, uh, this past year. This was our summer concert lineup, uh, for the touring concerts that we hosted. We started off on July thirty-first with Aaron Lewis, and we had Chris Young on August second. We really enjoyed having two shows on one weekend. Makes it a lot easier when we can leave those chairs set up. Uh, and then we hosted Blues Traveler and Gin Blossoms on September fourth. And the big one for this year was Red Clay Strays, a sold-out event. Nearly forty-six hundred folks at that, uh, event on September eleventh. And then finally, we talked about Three Dog Night, Little River Band, September twenty-sixth. So a little bit about our operations at the venue this past year, some highlights. Uh, our ticketing agency, Select a Seat, we sold ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-one tickets to our touring concerts. Uh, ticket grosses exceeded six hundred and sixty thousand. We also, once the lodge opened in July, we began opening, uh, for box office, uh, sales on Fridays from ten to two. Uh, we did hear some feedback in the workshop on that. So Kat and I are working on, um, some additional hours potentially for next season as we go into next year. One particular note on that as well, the way, because of our company, we manage multiple venues in this, in this market. You, uh, users, uh, customers, guests can purchase tickets not only here, uh, but also at Intertrust Bank Arena. And there's no, they pay the same amount of fees as they would there, as they would here, like they were buying it at our box office here. So. This again is a photo from Red Clay Strays. A total attendance for the season, including all of our events, was over thirteen thousand. Uh, we were pretty excited when we, we did some analysis of the ticket sales. We talked about the ten thousand number for the touring concerts. Of those ticket sales, ninety-two percent of them are outside of Andover, fifty-five percent outside of Fifty Miles. So I feel like, we feel like that we're having a pretty good impact on bringing folks to the city and to the venue that may not necessarily be from Andover. So. We also operated, uh, food and beverage sales throughout the season for all of our shows. Um, we do that with our in-house food and beverage staff, and then we also work with local food trucks. And so that's what you see in these photos here. Uh, we did a total for all of our events, about two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in food and beverage sales. And, you know, one way that we do analysis of food and beverage sales is how much each person spends that night. On average, for the touring concerts, we were around twenty-one dollars a person. That's a pretty good number. Stacks right up there with the other facilities that we manage in this market. It's right behind the arena as well. One of our favorite amenities, uh, we are thankful to the city for building the lodge, and we were able to use the patio. Um, so folks pay a, a ticket amount for the, those seats in the lodge. And you see the amenities listed on the screen, but we got a lot of good feedback, positive feedback on this amenity. Uh, folks loved being able to park onsite, uh, be in an air-conditioned area for as much as they want to be, restrooms there, and, and, uh, dining as well. So. That patio holds about a hundred and ten people. We also introduced the party deck, which this is the, the patio from the old lodge location. And, uh, we used that, we were able to sell that for three of the shows this summer. And we saw a lot of interest. It was full for every event. And, uh, again, it holds about forty-eight people, um, onsite parking. And then you see the rest of the amenities listed there. We also operated parking this past summer, so we used the five lots, uh, at Andover Central Park. Um, we, that's about a thousand spaces total. We used every one of those spaces for Red Clay Strays. Uh, we sold over, over the course of the season, two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four parking passes. This is a key piece of this. Forty percent of them were in advance. So we want to keep that number increasing because that, that allows for us to get people in to the parking lots quicker when they're purchased in advance. So, um, and total, we did just shy of fifty thousand dollars in parking revenue. We also, uh, worked to run a shuttle from Prairie Creek School, um, during the Greater Andover Days concert because we did have limited parking onsite. There were football games going on that night, uh, over here at Andover Central High School. And so, uh, we had some folks that rode those shuttles. So, and we used golf carts to help folks get to the gates since they did have a little bit longer walk that night. You can see on the screen, all of our sponsors this past season. Uh, we're super appreciative to every one of them to, and, uh, Kat, uh, as mentioned, is in the room, is working right now on renewals and new sponsorships for our two thousand twenty-six season. Not only did we do the concessions, um, we also did backstage catering, and then we also provided all the catering in the lodge. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about the lodge here in a second, uh, but you see some of the photos from that. Again, very well received, uh, for all of the events that we've done so far on, on catering in the lodge. Some of our backstage amenities for the artists, this is, and we want the experience to be a fantastic one when you come to an event. But if you are, if you leave an event and you had a great experience, you're going to go and you're going to rave to everybody you know about it, hopefully, or at least a lot of people. We want it to be a positive one. That's the best way to get the word out on a venue, um, not only for the guests coming in the front door, but also the guests coming in the back. So this is just some of what the artist sees, uh, when they arrive to the venue. Uh, we use site boxes currently for, uh, dressing room areas. We also use a shower and restroom trailer that comes in for each of these events. Uh, and then a combination of the lodge and a tent out back for dinner for backstage catering. So we can do breakfast and lunch in the lodge, and then we move to the tent in the evenings, uh, when the lodge is open to the public. Again, this is the second season in a row we've run. Uh, we have the walkthrough metal detectors when you come to the events. Uh, they're actually called. They're actually called open gates and they allow folks to walk through without taking their keys out of their pockets and their phone generally. And allows for a good experience, shorter lines. And also very appreciative to the City of Andover Police Department and Butler County EMS and City Fire Department, all of which we worked with throughout the season to make sure that guests had a safe, safe experience. We also used, we didn't have to use it as much as we thought we might, but we utilized AccuWeather and then also Butler County Emergency Services to keep an eye on the weather. We were fortunate this year for sure. Some of the positive social comments you could see there. But again, we saw a lot of positive on, on our sites and it was welcomed to see the hard work paying off and people having a fantastic experience. A lot of those up there were from Red Clay Strays and a lot of them were, were people that were from places like Nebraska and Oklahoma and outside of the city of Andover. So looking ahead to 2026, last year, we talked about this a little bit. We worked with a presenting promoter this past season called Mammoth. They did, they ended up doing three of our shows, three of our five shows. We also have worked with two other promoters, AEG and Pepper Entertainment to do two additional shows. Next year, we're kind of expanding, more promoters are learning about the venue. And currently we're talking to five different promoters about shows in 2026. So again, kind of trying to focus on artists who maybe have a little less production and a little less backstage needs. But we feel like we'll be able to continue to expand on the enhancements of the guest experience, not only for the guests, but also the artists. Next year, we're planning on, we're working right now on budgeting and confirming hopefully six, up to six concerts for next season and more, if we can get them. But six is our goal as of now. So the lodge, we opened in July and we've been, Kat has been working on renting the lodge out. We've hosted many folks in this, in this room for events. And we're actually looking at the holidays. I think it's the best place in the market, honestly, the way the park is decorated. So we're appreciative of that, but we will continue to not only rent out for this year, but we're busy right now renting out for events going into next summer and even next fall. So we talked a little bit about the recap on the summer. We are also, as was mentioned previously, part of the funding, additional funding request for this year. Last year, we finished at an operating loss of minus 296,000. This year, we're currently through September and we feel good about these numbers because the outdoor season is, is over at this point. We're forecasting a loss of minus 235,000. So an improvement, not where we want to be ideally, but we're headed in the right direction. Hosted five concerts this year instead of one in the previous season. One thing that has changed since we met at our workshop is our company, Legends Global, has made the, made the adjustment. And we're going to do a 50% reduction in the incentives that are earned by our company. So those will go down by about 12,500, which brings that net total to 222,500. Then we would use 20,000 from two funds that we have that are created by a facility fee that's charged on tickets. One is a promotions fund and one is a capital fund. We've worked with city staff to apply, we will apply 20,000 toward that, that loss, which remain, leaves a balance of 12,500. And so a couple of weeks ago in the workshop, we were looking at a, a request of 25,000 that has been reduced to 12,500 to close the gap on the, the variance between the budget and where we're forecasting to land this year. And I did want to open it up to any questions that anybody had at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
AJ, you said forecasting in that last sentence. Do you foresee any other amendments then? Or any other monies past this 12, 5 that we're talking about tonight?
Yeah, so our, every month, we work with our finance team to do a forecast. And so we put in the actual numbers from the month prior. September, we had three big shows at the amphitheater. So obviously that was a big month for us. Those numbers are all finalized and October will be coming out here in the next week. And so we feel good about the remainder of the year. We have a few events in the lodge. Those are already included in that forecast. So we do not foresee coming back for an additional request this year.
Anyone else?
Do we have any shows set in stone for next year?
How do you define set in stone? So I'm just kidding. We're working every single day. We, I would say right now, we have about five to six shows that we're kind of honing in on to target for next year. We're having conversations every single day with promoters. And so of those five or six shows, we are actually holding some dates. Don't have final dates yet, but we have some targets. And so that's always a good sign. So, so far, so good. Again, expanding the number of promoters that we're working with should help us. And again, a couple of promoters that didn't work in the venue last year that I've now heard about it and, and want to be here.
And then do we pay those promoters? Cause didn't we, did we pay Mammoth?
No, so we basically, we have a partnership with them. We share revenue streams with them. And this past year, we did not share any risk in any of the shows that we, we hosted. We have found that going into year two, this, a lot of the shows, one of the reasons we're coming back with this request is the ticket sales weren't quite where they needed to be on some of them. Obviously, Red Clay Strays was a big night, but some of the other ones weren't quite where they needed to be. And so part of that going into 26 is potentially taking on a little extra risk with the promoters, also sharing our revenue streams. But promoters, they buy in bulk and they buy in quantity and they work with agencies and the artists in many places outside of just here. And so they can get the best deals around and working with them should minimize our risk versus taking it on ourself.
Just one more, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think AJ, Mike, I believe, mentioned in the workshop, maybe doing a little bit more on the, on the fee side of it so that we can pull from the 92% that came from outside of Andover. Has there any been more discussion between the city and Legends to adjust that maybe rate?
Yeah, so we are planning, I believe it is late November, the 25th, to present our 2026 budget to this body. And then also as part of that, there would be an amendment to our existing agreement. Existing agreement says that we have a $4 facility fee. That facility fee will be increased or proposed to be increased to $5 for all shows in 2026.
And that would match other venues that you have as well.
That fee is comparable with all three of the other venues in this market and a large majority of the venues we manage as a company.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor. Well, just one more thing. I, I think, you know, again, AJ, I've told you and Kat this before that, that, you know, while we're spending a considerable amount of money, I, I do like having fun doing it. So these concerts that you provided this year, you know, Red Clay Strays be, you know, being sold out. I like that idea. I think another thing we need to point out too, that the lodge wasn't done until July of this year. So I, I can't wait for, to see what 2026 is, is going to bring. And I'm really excited to see what this conversation looks like next year. To give you guys a full, full year with the, with the lodge intact and, and going from there. So I'm, I'm super excited for this next year.
We appreciate those comments. We, we agree. We're excited as well and we believe we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I shared this with Councilman Henry already, but while I was at ICMA, one of the keynotes was an author of a book about having a love affair with your city. And it talks about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Probably all familiar with that in terms of like the human condition, but this was for cities. And I just had to take a picture and send it to Councilman Henry because the top of that is fun. And I think he got teased a little bit when he said that, at least a couple of snickers. But this national speaker's point was, you know, safety is more baseline. Like we expect where we live to be safe. We expect it to be functional. We expect the roads to function the way that a road needs to function and traffic to flow. Then you move to an area of comfortable and convivial, which is friendly and welcoming. It's a place you want to be, but the top of that hierarchy is fun. It's, it's like this is a place where you want to live. And we see those places a lot of times when we travel and we go on vacations and things of that nature. I'm really thrilled that this is a project in Andover that makes Andover fun. And you're creating a place that people want to be. And you know, it, it's not just fun to spend the money as, as I think Councilman Henry had said, but even a national speaker would back you on that, that that is in fact, one of the ultimate goals of community placemaking.
We're getting very close to where people might want to come and spend a weekend. And that's one thing Mike has worked on, talked about since he'd been on the governing body that, to be a destination point. And man, I, I'm excited about next year too, because first year was, we got you in way too late to get, get axed. And then, then we had the building of the lodge. But, but I tell you, when we, when Red Clay Stray was here, I, I, I thought we, we've made it. You know, it's going to bring a lot of attention to us because it's like you said, still, it always will be the best advertisements, word of mouth. And those guys will tell each others, hey, even though we, like some of them didn't pack the place, but they had a good time. You know, they want to make money, but they want to enjoy what they're doing. That's why they do it for a living. They just happen to make money doing it. So I'm very, I'm very positive and, and excited about what y'all did this summer. And I think next year will be far and above, but it's just going to keep growing as the city grows, the heritage grows, right? There's just going to be, they're going to feed off each other. So I appreciate what y'all have done to point, this point. Thank you very much. And to see you two out there working like, man, I did manual labor today and I don't like it. So I'm, I'm very, it means a lot to people when they see you actually carrying ice and carrying whatever you guys carry. Kat made the comment tonight, because usually she's got a chair in each hand. So, and that's no trigger words, right? So congratulations on the work this year.
Well, we appreciate those comments and we too enjoy being in the business of fun. We get to plan parties and events and it's, it's a blast. So thank you for the opportunity.
AJ, I know there could still be some lingering costs that probably still need to come in. Do you know on Red Clay Strays, how much that actually helped the bottom line? Cause I'm sure it put us into the green and helped reduce it. Do you know?
Yeah, so a really good example of that, we had this conversation a couple of weeks ago with city staff. So we started last year, we've been operating, we're on, we're through year two now, or almost to the end of year two. Every month up until the month of September had operated in a negative. And so in the month of September, we had a net operating income around 60,000 is where we landed. And so that, you know, what we've been planning, what we're doing, it finally came to fruition. And we can see, you know, the fruits of our labor and, and what it really can be. So we're looking forward to more months like that, but.
I got to stop. Oh, go ahead, sir.
So I asked Kat this last year, probably around the same time, probably where I know where I'm going. So of the five or six that you're looking at, are they top 100? Are they top 50 or are they top 25? Can you throw in what genre maybe they are? So.
Do they start with Arrow or Garth?
Well, no. Do they start with Green Day?
So many questions. I would, it's a, it's a little bit of mix of country and also classic rock. And then, and nowadays there's so many different types. It used to be, we try to keep similar shows kind of three to four weeks apart. And, but there's different genres within the genre. So even if you just look at country, Red Clay Strays is a lot different than Chris Young. And so we're able to, to kind of bring a little bit of variety even within the same genre. But right now, some country, some rock, and we also have a hold for pop. So hopefully those will come to fruition and we can, it's kind of like fishing. We, we put about 30 lines out in the water and hope that we get six confirmed. And so it's just constantly building that case to bring the show to the, to our venue in Andover.
All right. Thank you very much.
Demon hunters. Just mentioned.
All right. Thank you, sir. We have nothing to vote on.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the amended budget for the operation of the Capitol Federal Amphitheater for 2025.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to point, I, I think Jody mentioned it in the, in the workshop, but I, I just commending staff. You know, we've talked about before as well, the park being useful as a park. You know, after the concerts and fencing and that kind of stuff. I'll be honest, I can't remember what the concert was the day before, the night before the Chamber Cornwall Tournament. But everything was cleaned up. I mean, the chairs were gone, loaded. It was back to being a, a park that the chamber then could use for a Cornwall tournament. And I just want to commend you guys and the, and the staff for, for taking the importance of what the park is, you know, after a concert and bringing it back to looking like a park. So I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, big kudos to our staff. They jumped in those chairs. That was the night of Red Clay Strays. So our biggest setup, 4,600 chairs. And they were cleaned up and back in the side boxes within by about 12:30 that night. So everybody jumped in.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't tell the, I don't think that there was a concert there the night before.
Well, that's what we want you to.
Yeah. So I mean, it was awesome, guys. Thank you.
And more importantly, I didn't have to do it.
That's true too.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you again. 11171.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to recess and do an executive session for consultation with the city attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship. Per KSA 754319B2, the session is to include the governing body, city administrator, city attorney, and assistant city administrator. The open meeting will resume at 8:37.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries 6-0.
Motion carries six zero.
All in favor, say aye.